Warden is twenty twelve dash zero six four adopting compliance manual going to Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, Kate, you're on. No, we're not.
Okay, public hearing on the Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of sixty-four. Actually, we had a Civil Rights Act already implemented and copied on everybody's desk just about. But in order to meet the requirements, Mayor, for apartment transportation, is that correct? We had to redo it. And our human resource city clerk spent a lot of time on it. And it was basically recaps what we had before, added some additional things, which basically says, you know, we can't discriminate, we've got to do, publish certain things, and I'm not going to bore you with what it is, but it's about that thick. We sent it in, it was accepted by the feds and by the state, and now that clears the road. That was the last hurdle we had to make for STP, I do think. And STP is some money called Surface Transportation Program that we were approved for four hundred thousand dollars. We had to go to... Do you know how much we had to go?
At least two hundred thousand.
We had to go two hundred thousand. And this will not, we will not begin this saving until spring, but Mr. Lawrence just walked in and he can tell you some of the hurdles we had to overcome. This money is obligated and set aside for paving in the spring. And if there's any questions about the Title VI Act nineteen sixty-four, which we updated, this is a public hearing to open up for any questions. Mr. Attorney, you got any?
Nope, I think it's probably necessary to update it, and I think we found out that we needed to update it for the retained because of grants is my recommendation.
Jim, you want to say anything about the STP money you want to elaborate on what's for, or can you use that?
We have a schedule. The engineer, we've got a schedule set up. We will start the process in February. You've got several steps you have to go through. Announce for bids, have pre-bid conference, you know, several things like that, and it takes time. He and I got together and went to June and used June as a target paving time, and then went backward to get this schedule to start the process in February. So in February sometime, we will probably, at the February workshop for March meeting, we will ask to advertise for bids and get this process started so that when the paving weather season gets here, we'll have everything ready to go.
Now, do you have this just for a certain street, right? It's not just all over town, just, what does STP mean? You like South Avenue?
I'm sorry?
On just certain streets, we can use this money for them?
There's only certain streets that we can get that, that the state designates. It has to be used, and where they get this is traffic count. You've all seen these buildings, boxes on the side road with a cord across the street. That's the state, and they do a traffic count on state highways, even city streets. They use that traffic count to base the need of which streets have the most traffic. Then they designate where this money has to be spent according to their survey. This is not just a random check, or it's not something that we have any control over. We have no control over whatsoever. They specify where the money has to be spent, and so that's the reason that there are certain streets that it has to be, that's where it has to go.
Okay, you know the streets, right?
Yes, we know.
Okay, you will go ahead and do the streets?
Uh, South Avenue, where I call it Four More Hills, from Jacksonburg Pike, their central, their gambling red light, to Loop Road, South Cumberland, up here from Central to the city limit out of Long Hollow, Thirteenth Street from the red light there at Central, diagonally across the corner market, Thirteenth Street from Central to Beach. Then depending on how the money goes, Back Valley Road is the next street, starting in there behind the middle scope, is the next street on their paving schedule.
Okay, that's just Foothills Drive to Back Valley Road, Jim, it's not all Back Valley Road, is it?
No, Foothills Drive is not.
Part of it?
Not part of it, for whatever reason. But whatever money, when we get these streets completed, whatever money, of course, the tonnage and all that stuff, asphalt tonnage, will determine how much, if any, that we can pave on Back Valley Road, starting at Foothills Drive, there at ten second. Of course, this paving includes striping, street signs, utility adjustments, I guess that's about it. So this is not just blacktop, but it includes striping and utility adjustments and street signs. Any other questions?
No more questions. Number two, Warden is twenty twelve dash zero seven, Warden's the meeting, the zoning Warden is Cila Volle to the scene. Chapter four, section eleven dash four four, from a C one business district, chapter four, section eleven to four five, to a C two highway business district, and chapter four, section eleven, four six, to a C three local business district. Stan, who on?
Mayor, Council, this ordinance was passed unanimously by the Plan Commission on you all, which is prohibiting temporary structures in a commercial area, C one, C two, C three, unless it is approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, there won't be any temporary structures. And what we're referring to is temporary structures, someone setting up a temporary, like shed or something, to run a store out of, but it would have to be approved through the Board of Zoning Appeals and Plan Commission.
Is there any more comments?
That only pertains to the commercial district.
That's correct.
And that's a, there's a time limit on that too, isn't there, Stan?
Ninety days.
Ninety days.
And this tell them, Bob, it's already ours, Stan?
No, but they will, I guess what you would call a grandfather from, anything from this point on, it will affect us.
Jim, how many do you have, be grandfathered in?
At this time, you've got six.
Any more comments, Council? Ray?
No, I want to stand right in that one.
All right, this is going into the meeting. This meeting is called Order, it's ready to honor. First, please, Stan.
We'll go to Lord and prayer. Lord Father, we thank you, Lord Father, this night, your God, for all your blessings, especially for salvation with the cross of Calvary. Pray to your blessing our community, and our nation, and our leaders, and our local leaders, your God, and officials, that they would make the right decisions for the community and for us. We thank you, your God, for your leadership, and for all your grace and mercy. We do remember all those that has cancer, and all those different diseases, and those that are sick in the hospital, and those in the nursing home. Special blessing upon them. And I pray to your blessing, our city, and officials, and all the people gathered here together, we give you the honor, praise, and glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
We'll say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please receive. Joy, toll, robe. Here.
Mr. Faden.
Here.
Ms. Graham.
Here.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Here.
Mayor Safield.
I am number four, approved in the midst of your December twenty twelve meeting. Much pleasure, Council.
Second.
Have said a couple of them.
Mr. Vellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Faden.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Motion carries, number five, reporting your boards, commision, and department heads. Much pleasure, Council.
Will be approved later.
Motion out of seat.
Second.
Call her up.
Mr. Vellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Faden.
Yes.
Ms. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
I am number six, any comments from the citizens? Charles, come on in, please.
Okay. Where you go, blacktop, that, up there, well, he didn't mention it, and I counted the houses, another thing on here, and some of them, you got blacktop, got one house on the street, you know, and just done that. I just want to go wonder from Jim, where you go fishing, getting bad.
I don't, Jim?
With twelve houses on that, I counted the taxes on it.
I'm involved in Charles.
Walling Street, yeah.
This money through this STP, we're not, we have certain streets that it has to be spent on. Now, when other paving money becomes available, I'll admit, West Wallen does need to be paid.
I've gone, how many houses on it? Twelve on you, blacktop's, I've got one on it, maybe some more, a little, you know, another house, if it's a house, one house, another. I just go wonder when you go do, you know, some of the neighbors got, asked me about it, I said, I don't know, they promised me they'd go fishing. Usually you can go by at night, hit them chunk holes, and you go if I look at it, don't you?
I see you.
It's a bad shape, I admit.
They got twelve houses on it.
Jim, surely December sometime, right?
Or December? The way the, the way the state cut the budget, I don't, we wouldn't have any money.
You heavy money for your blacktop.
But I have grant money to pay with.
I mean, you heavy money for patching.
Well, yeah, we can patch a little, but as far as paving, we, I mean, we just don't have the money.
Was that state money, you just got down blacktop and up through High Street, but that street's state money?
No.
No.
City money, I love it.
Yeah. But that was, that was designated for that street.
Yeah, just for that street.
Jim, we have any money left out of that cap outlay note that was designated for paving?
No.
None at all?
It was all used up.
But in fact, you know...
It was all used up and went over.
Pardon?
We went over a little bit on that.
I had, I had to shift some money out of another fund a little bit to finish paying for it.
Is that one of your priorities that you had listed, Jim?
The paving?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as we, you know, as far as it would go.
Yeah. So what, what we're saying is, when the money comes available, it must be one of the first streets.
Walden is one of the worst, yeah. Walden is one of the streets that needs paving.
Yeah.
And I'm seeing you got twelve houses on it, and that's quite a, you know, a lot of taxi company in there.
Right, I agree.
Thank you.
You will, Charles.
Thank you, Charles.
Any more comments? Do you have being there? Any announcements?
Not on that, you've got some people here, so I think you want to talk to Mike.
I guess ask you some comments.
Comment who says they don't know, unless you tell them.
Gary, you want to say something, Gary?
I assume that's what they're here for.
My, 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 yeah. I'm not familiar with this place, so I'll just stand here. No, mostly everybody down here, Mr. Stanfield, Mr. Hatmaker, Mr. Bannon, Stan, Mr. Burge, you know, probably seventy percent of people down here tonight. The only issue that I brought here tonight, I believe Mr. Stanfield and Mr. Hatmaker is already familiar with this little parking zone up here next to the restaurant. You know, we had an issue of a mom being enrolled a ticket, and Mr. Goins being enrolled a ticket, which I have no problem with that, and I spoke to Mike, I spoke to Chief Police Department about this issue. They was a two-hour parking sign.
We had to go.
Okay. The only issue that I had in dispute with this situation is it should be on both sides of the street.
Okay.
And you referred to me that the signs wouldn't be on whatever for the other side. Okay, no problem with that. I don't know what the city's issue is on this, whether it's still going to be a two-hour parking or not. No, I don't know.
No.
Okay, I understand that, but I've also, you've got to understand, the chief of police situation here, this hasn't been enforced in years.
Oh, okay.
There, and the lonesome behind Smith, because, you know, a lot of people's pulling in there, getting stuff going, and I understand that, okay. But you've got to give him a little leeway, I understand that, because you cannot have somebody coming parking in front of your business all day long. No, you know, it's not good for your business. So now, I can understand that. But basically, the only reason we was here, we wasn't sure about how this was settled on this parking issue. You know, it's a little minor inconvenience, to be honest with you, and it, it kind of makes one mad at another, and this and that, and there's no cause for it. This is a minor issue, really, it's nothing to bother, nothing to even bother this council with, to be honest with you, you've got more important things to do, I understand that. But whatever this council decides on that parking issue, there's fine with me. If they want to keep it that way, then that's what we do.
And I'm trying to explain to you that, that here, I apologize, I didn't know anything about it.
I didn't either, Mike.
The only, the only problem, and I'll be honest with you, you know, the problem we've had is right here on Central.
Yeah.
The parking van, and I personally, myself, have seen two wrecks because of that red van, where people was coming from North Tennessee to hit Jacksonburg Pike.
Yeah.
They pulled up to take a right on that red light, didn't look, they don't see anybody. They don't see that car beside that red van, so it's too late, and I've seen two accidents myself. I've had a couple complaints on the van.
Yeah.
And a couple of parked cars parked on Central, or the sweet street, or can't clean the storm drains.
I understand that.
Because nobody moved the vehicles at night.
You know, that's, that's why we've got to give the chief over here a little bit of leeway to handle a little bit of this.
Oh, you can, Jim, you can handle it. But since, since it's come about, now, I've seen Stan over twice, Stan, talked to him about moving the van, and they would move the van for about a week.
Like that long?
And then put it right back. Now, since they done this, they've moved the van from one block up to the next block, which is made a portion.
So you've got the same situation. I know. I understand that.
I mean, you try to be nice to them.
I understand it. The only thing about this situation, you know, I understand the officer doing his job, and I'm thankful for that.
Right.
It should have been handled a little differently. A lot of times, if you've got someone on the business that's parking in front of a two-hour parking, go in and ask them, and tell them, you know, first. After that, then he's got every right in the world, in my opinion, to do what he needs to do.
But as I said, Virgil, I apologize.
Oh, it's, it's not all your fault, Mike, like I said, I've parked there for a long time, I never been paid attention to the two-hour parking.
I didn't, be honest with you.
But now, I didn't pay attention because they went on the other side of the street. Now, what's fair for one side of the street is fair for the other side of the street.
Oh, I promise you, if it happens, we'll be fair on both sides.
Now, that's all anybody's asking, we, you know, any of these small businesses, you know, they've been here in this county for a long time.
Right.
And, you know, they've helped support this county, it's not much, but they do, but they're still here.
And like I said, I apologize to Mr. Rutherford back there, he, him and my dad grew up together, around there, I would never bar Mr. Rutherford, you know.
I understand that.
And I apologize if the police officer didn't take this.
You know, I understand it, it's, you cannot blame the officer in this situation, I'm sorry, you can't.
He, well, he was doing what he's telling.
He done his job.
He was doing his job.
And most of the times, when they get a new officer in, this is a fact, that's the first place they're sticking. And this issue pops up, you know, it popped up ten year ago on me, they wrote me a ticket, oh, here behind Smith, you know, which is no big deal, you know, I, I took care of it because I'm always on them, you know, I understand that. But now, he was right, it's an over, it's a lonesome, I understand that. But you've got to have a little leeway for these businesses, I understand that. And, you know, the best thing, you know, I don't know, do we have a traffic out, a cop that walks up and in the streets now?
We do have police officers walking the business district.
I noticed one front of Smith today.
They do, they do walk, and I find they walk every day, you know, you're right.
Yes, they really do.
And I, now, I told Jim.
I have no problem with that, you know, he just needs to go in and meet a few of the people that own these businesses, and understand what they're doing.
Right, right.
You know, the biggest thing they've got now is people still on the blind, and you've got people making mess right here on the center of the street if they can, and I understand, that's why you don't want that being there all day. You may have a mobile mess left right there in front of you, don't.
I don't even, I don't even.
So we've, we've got to give these guys a little, little leeway to take care of the situation. But now, I don't know, that's why we're here, just to see how the issue was, whether the two-hour parking stands, or whether it doesn't.
We've, we've had no problem in North Tennessee.
But now, by, by with the two-hour parking non-standing now, if any of these businesses have a complaint with somebody parking in front of them, can the chief do anything about it? You know, you get into a situation here by that.
Probably, that's the only thing, you know, it's asking the moon or something, you know, where does it park in front of business? You know, I know some, one business in particular on North Tennessee, they got mad, this one business, and they parked right in front of the business.
That's what I'm saying, you know, you could have some business get mad at somebody else, and just go over and park the vehicle, and put them all in, it's nothing you can do, I understand that. That's why we've got to give, you know, these officers a little leeway, try to do something about it.
You know, we've got those parking lots right across the hall, we've got you and her.
We've got plenty of parking lots in this town right here.
Yeah.
You know, I understand that. But that's the only reason we're down here tonight, because we did not know which way this issue was going to go, if it was still going to stand in the, go around, park somewhere, because if there's any problem, she will.
Now, if the problem, to me, if the problem is on Central, I agree with you, then let's eliminate all two-hour parking except Central, and then make that a two-hour parking. But we need to, when we do this, and we put it into a motion for it, it needs to be where that we can protect everybody by using the word necessary.
Yeah.
Wherever it's necessary that this council feels to put the two-hour parking, then we can do it without having to come back in and, and go over all this stuff again. So I'm for eliminating all two-hour parking except on Central Avenue where the problem was created to start with. That's my view.
You, you put parking out here on the main street through this town, it creates havoc. No, I understand that, full-time parking creates havoc. But I agree with Ashford on this issue, we've got to have a little leeway here where these guys can work, these guys over here at the police department can do their job, I understand that. But like I said, I did not know which way the issue went, this issue's going to go, however you decide on it, it's five of me. All I ask is what's fair for one side is fair for the other, and that's it. And it's caused a lot of hard feelings between people, which is no cause, I'm sorry, there's no cause, but we, most of us know each other, we've got a problem, so you sit here and work it out, really.
I promise you, Virgil, I, I think the majority of the council feels the same way.
Well, you know, other than that, I have nothing to bring before this step, I'm going to get home, leave you guys alone.
And I appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate it, Ron.
Okay, every administration, true, Farmer Paul Blankenship and five employees to install roof for the police department, parry and cost six thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars labor, and nineteen thousand five hundred three dollars for intruders, not exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars. Kate, you're on, elaborate a minute.
Well, I recommend to you to declare this an emergency, simply because the leak's back there, and it keeps falling, the ceiling keeps falling, it's going to destroy our phone system, our computer system, and it's going to damage, going to cost us five dollars money. So my recommendation would be to declare this an emergency situation.
How long has it been like this, Kate?
It's got worse and the worst. We've known a little bit.
Like in our last six months?
Huh?
In our last six months. It's, it's not.
The last month is when it's really been falling.
We've had a patch pile probably, I know, at least two times.
Well, if I may speak a little bit on this, I went up on the roof and looked at it, and you've got three or four big holes up there, this big around, it's poor loose, the water can't go no more but down through the, the system. And me and Blankenship and Gary Burke, we all went up there and looked at it, and, and I agree with Kate, it's not hard to see. This is the ceiling, if some of yous want to look at it, this is the ceiling, it's done dropped down, and then this is the wall that's done split out, and all the shit rock come off of it, and, and that's where all the phone system is in today. And it's very simple, I'm for fixing it, if you've got a building, take care of it. And if I need to put that into a formal motion, Mr. Sexton, to declare this as emergency, I will.
Wait a minute. Like I say, you know, since I've been learning, we've had this bank patched twice, maybe three times. And every time we thought we had it fixed, and every time it comes down for it, we've got buckets everywhere, and water on these waters and stuff, and these files, we'd move it better if I didn't have it, office, except computers. And like I said, we all knew except Bob, Bob wasn't here, and we'd beat those roofs out. The community money that we received, I thought five hundred thousand dollars to fix this bank here, which is like a Titanic, it takes in more water than a Titanic do with some. But the bid come on this bank is four hundred some thousand dollars, just a whole building, okay? We had the wreck center up there for Johnny, we had the wreck center over East Park, and the barhouse also did the roof. And to be honest, we, when this bid come in on this building, four hundred some thousand dollars, I never dreamed of it, and we was just barring time before it did have to dance.
But it still requires to be bid out, I mean, anything over four thousand dollars has to have three bids, and has to be advertised. Well, Kate, Terry, you talked to the list today, what you...
I, I talked to Ms. Ashford, Ms. M. Tass' attorney, she said that, I'll tell you exactly what she said, she said, first of all, she didn't feel that, that it fell under emergency procedures, but if the city felt, based on the circumstances, that you've got a leak with your water, with your equipment, your electrical and computer, computer set, equipment in there, that you could declare it emergency as long as you document it. But like, for example, the nineteen thousand materials, you're going to, anything over ten thousand dollars, of course, the materials are not, the way I understand, it's not going to come from one source, but you still have to get three quotes on the materials, to cover the materials, and then buy the materials from at least two different places, and of course, the labor's a totally different matter.
Ray, have a seat.
As far as I heard of it, I'm not familiar with what does constitute, or doesn't constitute, an emergency purchase. I'd like the opportunity to at least be able to research it a little bit and look into it. I don't know what constitutes, you know, like, what constitutes one, what doesn't, but I think she gave some good advice from the standpoint of, for the materials, you definitely would have to double-check that as far as getting quotes on that, but the labor itself, I don't know how you'd deal with that, I don't know how, to be honest with you, I don't, I need to look at it, and this is the first I've heard of it, to be honest with you. And I can't, I'm afraid, if I gave you an answer now, I'd probably be wrong.
I, I think that any other, any other place in the building, you know, if it's just a, a room, or there's a desk or something that can move out and, and wait for bids, I'd say yes, it probably would have been an emergency, but, you know, you've got, we spent forty-some thousand dollars for a new phone system, and it goes in this room, plus other computer equipment, and for that reason, I think you could designate that particular part of it as, as an emergency, you know, not to ruin your equipment. Now, I don't know how long it's going to take it to rain again, in order to...
know how long it's gonna take it to rain again in order to do that, and I don't know how you protect it. In the meantime, if it does rain, I just don't know.
But it's been going on for more than thirty days, correct?
I, I don't know. It's not got this bad?
It's not got this bad. It's been going on, I mean, it was like this when I was there four years ago.
It wasn't this bad.
It wasn't this bad, I agree. But it still need to go through a bidding process, Mayor. I believe it need, at this amount of money, it need to go through a bidding process.
Well, now, that's the reason that we've got the problems we've got back here now with the attitude that you've got, Mr. Fannin, is, is because it, uh, we've got the leaks. We've got five million dollars in the bank, and you're gonna sit here and tell me that we can't declare this thing an emergency and fix it and, and, and get the problem solved instead of costing us another fifteen or twenty thousand dollars by waiting on it? Uh, I'm, I'm not for waiting on it. I'm for fixing it, getting it over with, and, and getting it fixed and save our bill.
Terry just said the materials had to be bid out. So, you can't, you can't really fix it until...
You don't have to bid it, you gotta quote it. You gotta get three quotes, which is what you gotta do. It's not a bid procedure. You gotta get three quotes on it.
Well, Terry, you wanna... If, if you, if, if you're buying it from, from, and of course, we buy materials all the time, if you buy it from, if you're buying it from more than one person, uh, you're gonna have to get three quotes on it from, uh, for, for each part of it. Uh, if you buy it from one person, you're gonna have to do sealed bids.
That's right.
So, Terry, is it my understanding, so, are we purchasing the material?
Well, that's what...
And we're gonna ask, and we're gonna ask for three quotes, and this gentleman's just providing the labor?
Yes. That's what, that's what they proposed, you know, that we would be buying the materials and the, the people, Mr., I guess, Mr. Blankenship, would only be provide, providing the labor on it.
How will the, how will this nineteen thousand five hundred three dollar and forty cent, forty-three cent, the material, how, where did that come from?
We got a price quote from a roofing, from a material shop on that material. We actually got an estimate on what it would cost.
So, we need, Terry, what you're saying, we need two more of those estimates on that identical list of, of materials that we need from this roof before we move forward?
You would have to, you would have to take, you would have to take quotes, but for that amount of money, you could not buy it from one, one person, one vendor, right? If you bought it from one vendor, you'd have to do a sealed advertise bids.
See, we, we could still do it just as quick, put a sealed advertise bid. We could pay it off in ten days, and we could have this in within ten days.
Is that the minimum, Julie? Is ten for advertising, or what?
Ten, no.
You're wrong.
Is it the minimum of what?
Ten days.
You, you basically have to give, you just have to give a reasonable time in order for...
Actually, the specs have been set down, and I assume the specs have been set down because it's got off of, you know, you got nineteen thousand, you got to the penny how much it's gonna be. So, the specs evidently has been set down, so it shouldn't take more than ten days to bid this out. You're gonna get three quotes, and it's gonna take four or five, a week to get three quotes anyway.
You have a adjourned session.
You were in adjourned session. You wanna say something, Kate, when you stand through the...
Well, uh, not really. Um, I'd just like to get it fixed. Uh, I agree that we need three quotes on the nineteen thousand, uh, five hundred and three dollars.
If, if you, if, if you're gonna get it from one, you know, if you're gonna buy it from different vendors, you can get three, you can get some quotes. If you're gonna, if it's gonna come from one vendor, you're gonna have to seal advertise bids.
Which this price here, this nineteen thousand five hundred and three dollars, that is from one vendor, correct?
As far as I know, yes.
Is it possible to get it from different vendors and break it down?
Yeah, definitely, we can get it from different vendors.
We just need to make sure each vendor's giving the, the exact, um, standard of bidding.
And, and, and if you do it that way, then you would have to purchase it from more than one vendor.
Yeah.
The material.
Well, we all want it fixed.
Right, exactly.
And we want it fixed quick. Now, if we acted quick enough to do this where it's, you know, it doesn't look like this, it probably happened, but, uh, I still think a sealed bid is, is the only way to go, and we can do it within ten days since we already have the specs.
I think we're better stores of our money if we bid it, because...
There's no specs on the roof.
Carl, please, Carl.
Please, there's no specs?
Well, the only specs you would have, Carl, is, is the material itself. That's all.
Just the, just the square footage of the material, is that...
Now, on the, on the, uh, labor part, uh, that also, as Terry said, that's an issue also. Uh, it has to be done under contract labor somehow.
Well, I would assume if we're gonna bid it, it'd be part of the bid.
Right.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if you do it as an emergency thing, uh, it'd have to be done under contract labor.
We're gonna get, have to get three quotes anyway. It's gonna take ten days, seven to ten days to get three quotes.
Well, you, you gotta get in, if you do sealed bids, you gotta get in the newspaper first of all.
Well, newspaper is, the day's Tuesday, we can have it in newspaper Thursday.
They may, they may or may not be, because they have, they've got, they want it in there certain, so many days ahead.
Well, we, we got time.
Yeah, yeah, right.
It only has to be in one thing, he's here.
Well, meantime, we might first go ahead and put a bid in for five more five-dollar buckets to catch the water in. Right, cut up what you're left out. Do we need to bid them off?
Nope, but you need to bid this.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
So, make me a motion here.
I make a motion, we bid this out and, uh, cut it off at, what day is the day? The eighth? Cut it off as, as the eighteenth and open the bids and, and hire it out, adjourn the session so we can, uh, bid and award the bid on the eighteenth.
Yes.
Um, do I have a second?
Yes.
That's a color vote.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fannin?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Havener?
No.
Motion, Terry.
I wanna make a motion that would consider this as a, as an emergency situation, put it into a form of a motion.
Motion, they had three votes, Terry?
Uh?
They had three votes.
Uh, well, you can sit, you got three votes on that. If we declare it an emergency situation, we're good, then we have, we won.
Make a motion, Andrew. Make the motion, Dan.
Get a second on it or not?
Make the motion, huh?
Make your motion. The, the motion is that, uh, somewhere or another, we need to fix this thing temporary, because if it rains, you've got water coming in out of here. And we have no control of the water. I don't, Bob Fannin don't either. I don't think he's connected that close. But, uh, my motion is that we declare this as an emergency situation, whatever it takes to fix it, temporary or, uh, or not. Fix it. It's my motion.
It's your motion, do I have a second?
Carl, is there any way that you can go up there and do something, just a temporary little fix, to get this for the eighteenth?
Ain't no way of guaranteeing nothing. You've got a concrete deck for two roofs on it.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't think you could tar it a little or something and, and keep the bulk of it out until the eighteenth? Like I said, I can do it, if there's no guarantee to it.
Put a small pump up there, maybe?
Stan, how long you been putting buckets in?
I ain't putting no buckets in, the police department has.
Police department, how long you been putting buckets in? Just one or two times?
No, I'm not sure. Well, you've got a serious problem in this vault back there.
Oh, I agree.
What's about to happen here with that ceiling falling in, somebody's gonna get hurt back there. You need to go back there and look at it. Have you looked at it?
I haven't seen it.
You need to go look at it. You've got a problem, and it needs to be fixed before we end up with a more serious problem.
Well, we wanna fix it. My understanding, it would take, Carl, you said eleven days to fix it after we, something like that?
It'd be complete.
Complete.
I just looked on...
The roof would be on in three, but you got all the detail work.
Do I have a second for Andrew's motion?
And you create yourself a mold situation here, and you're gonna end up in a big lawsuit with the employee, uh, having them working in an area for that, it's, it's all been molding and...
Looks like they already worked, molded. It looks like it's already been done there.
Well, you, you don't need to tell them that you can do that.
You do need to.
Do you have a motion on the floor? Do you have a second? Is it where we are, and he has a motion on the floor?
Do I have a second? Motion, Ashford, let's see, take it, be down.
Since this, you're going to build up roof, which is fine, what did you propose to do up there on the police section only? Can you stand up and tell us what, what's your idea of fit making that a fix?
I was gonna re-roof the whole section. You've got a wall on one side and wall on the other. I was gonna go from wall to wall, replace everything with new material.
Take the driver's law, everything up there removed.
The deck, the deck in your thing, would, Carl?
Right, you'll get new insulation.
It's concrete pad, Carl?
Yes, concrete deck. And then, if you want to take it off, then...
Ridiculous.
I'll take it off. I'll glue the insulation down. That way I can do away with the rock. They're just up there to hold it on. Then I'll fully adhere a sixty mil system on top of it.
That's a, that's a new, that's a new white TPO, will it come with a...
Enter your business.
...manufacturers more deep.
I'm just curious, you know, we've got three sections here, and they're like steps to come up. This is high step, I'm thinking, right now, and we go out here, and then we go down to the library. It's like, like this. And we're only talking about the place block, you know, and someday, in the near future, you're gonna have to consider coming above through here, although, I don't say in lakes, you're about...
You got lakes?
It's leaking, it's leaking.
You got, how many you got in here, Stan? How many leaks have you got in this building?
In this building?
This section, this section.
It's leaking in here, and it's leaking in, there's at least three that I know of out here in the lobby.
Yeah, and, and we just, hard, got a guy, got hard now, trying to fix three or four of them over here, leaks.
Yes.
Didn't they, in fact, even talk to the day?
Yes.
Oh, I hadn't heard.
Under administrations, I'm number two, approve agreement for Community Health of East Tennessee and HUD, in the amount of, uh, twenty-six hundred dollars for eight homeless units for the first year and twenty-three hundred for the second year. Phil, if you wanna come up, please, Ms. Fannin?
Hi.
Do you do everybody, please?
I think I do. I do have a handout, so I'd like to give the people a start, please.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to address this group, if you'll pardon my bat. Um, I do wanna just share with you that in two thousand and ten, Community Health of East Tennessee wrote a grant to attempt to provide affordable housing for chronically homeless individuals. According to the definition of the grant, what the requirements were, we had to determine a geographic area that we wanted to serve. We looked at the number of, um, uh, families that were requesting help with utilities and with rent payments, families who had been served through the HPRP grant, which is a grant that came through the Tennessee Valley Coalition to End Homelessness. And the city of LeFollet by far had many more requests for assistance than any other jurisdiction within our county. As a matter of fact, Campbell County did utilize almost thirty percent of the funding for the HPRP program, and, um, the city of LeFollet used a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of that grant amount just for utilities for people residing within the city of LeFollet. So, based on the data that we were able to collect from the point in time count and from the HPRP funding, we chose the city of LeFollet. When we wrote the grant, we were very, um, optimistic at, uh, the award, thought that we'd save nine families, so I need to correct you, Mayor, not eight, but nine families. It would be nine households, individuals and families. So, um, we were looking at trying to come up with funding that would provide for five two-bedroom apartments and four one-bedroom apartments. We were looking at prioritizing who those individuals would be who are labeled as chronically homeless. That would include victims of violent, that would include disabled veterans. It would also include people coming out of treatment programs such as the Shepherd's Home or something similar, and anyone who might be coming out of some type of a treatment facility who would be willing to follow the protocol, the rules that would be in place for this program. This is a permanent supportive housing program, and we, when we were awarded the grant, we were thrilled, ready to move forward. And then HUD made an interim rule. HUD can do that. And their ruling was that the leases for these apartments would have to be between the grantee, which would be us, and the landlord. And when we contacted our insurance company, our insurance company indicated that we were at too high of a risk to take that on. As you are aware, Community Health has a federally qualified health center. We have homes for adult disabled. We have a network of programs, including domestic violence shelters, and they felt the risk was just too great. We said, fine, we'll pick up a secondary insurance to try to help cover it. No, because if that's exhausted, they will still go back to the primary insurance source, and the risk was too great. For months, we researched possibilities, and finally came to the conclusion, much to our regret, that we were gonna have to turn the money back over to HUD. And at the last minute, we asked, can we transfer this money to someone? HUD indicated that we could do that, but the money had to remain in Campbell County. So, it's still a blessing, and the real blessing is that the Tennessee Valley Coalition to End Homelessness, which is located on Callahan Drive in Knoxville, is willing to serve as our partner. So, they will assume the greatest part of the risk. All of the apartment leases will be in their name. Um, the little complicating factor was that now there's some cash matches that we're gonna have to try to accommodate, and so that's why I'm here this evening. Mayor, we've tried to keep you abreast of things all along, and I know that you're very knowledgeable of the programs and services, but I'm not sure about some of the rest of our city council members. What we're looking at would be, Community Health would provide case management services and serve as a housing manager. I would be serving in that capacity. In addition to that, we would be offering drug and alcohol services for these clients. In addition to any health concerns that they might have, Community Health would cover those costs. And, um, we would also offer a number of supplies that would be needed for the program to be in operation, especially in the area of whatever documentation needed to be done to satisfy HUD. They, as you are aware, there are many lengthy requirements with HUD. Um, the LeFollet Public Housing Authority is working with us and attempting to help us with some of these things, and, um, we have to come to you to ask for some help with the cash match. As you look at the data that is printed on the back of the letter, you'll see a budget. The total cash match that the city of LeFollet is being asked to contribute is twenty-six twenty-four, two thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars. If that were divided among the nine households that could be established, that comes to less than three hundred dollars per household. And as you can see from some of those costs that are listed there, some of those have to do with supplies for the program and the operations, but have to do with drug and alcohol abuse counseling, and that's primarily for drug testing, also furniture and household items, and then some of the sophisticated computer networking systems that we have to be able to go into. So, it comes to a little bit less than three hundred dollars per family. Our goal is to try to... Our goal is to try to serve nine families total. They have to come from the city of LeFollet, that's what we specified. The county mayor is agreeing to cover three thousand dollars for cash match with a veterans' grant and with an HMIS grant already, and that does serve the full county. So William has extended himself as far as he can at this point. And since this is to be confined within the city of LeFollet, we are coming to the city and asking for assistance then with this remaining amount. Our plan is to identify a family or a household one at a time. When that family is identified, to locate the apartment and arrange for the housing furnishings that are needed, plus the household items that are needed, and get that family in as quickly as possible. We're in no position to try to do nine at once, so we'll tackle it one at a time. This funding for this grant is two years, so it's not a lifetime, it's two years. And what we're looking at then is for the cash match for year one. We would like to think that we could be in a position where through additional pleas that we put out to the community, area churches and what have you, that we can get enough donations to cover the cash match for the following year. But we, we were not able to hit the ground running this time around due to the fact that the insurance caused a problem, and we weren't sure we were even gonna be able to have the grant. I would hate to give HUD back a hundred and eight thousand dollars when we could house people with that money in this community. And so I'm just asking for the support of city council, and I am more than willing to answer any questions that you might have. Please note that on the other side of the budget is a letter that has been submitted to HUD where the documentation has been put in place, that this program would be transferred to the Tennessee Valley Coalition, who in turn would transfer it back to Community Health to serve the people in the city of LeFollet. We're still waiting on final word from HUD, and they're waiting on final word for this last little bit of cash match. So it's kind of a domino effect. But once we get that in place, there will be a memorandum of understanding that will be signed with the appropriate parties, and we can begin to move forward. I will tell you that news of this has gotten out, because we have been talking about this for a while now, and we already had many phone calls coming in asking for help. But we can't begin to do anything until we get the final approval letter and until that check is cut. So we know that the need is there. Now may I answer any questions for you?
Well, Phil, you know how I feel about it.
Yes, sir.
Years on this, and just this week, I've had three families call me, some kind of children or something, and probably a lot of it's because our families involved, you know, good friends. But when Melanie first met with me and came last week, I went to a local business. Did you come up, please? I went to a local business here in the city of LeFollet, and I was telling this kid about it, and I gave him here a douche sale in Morris Road. And I was telling him what we was trying to do here in the city of LeFollet, homeless. He's a pastor of a church, a local church in Campbell County, and he pledged a hundred dollars a month for a first church.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
How much did you say you had to have?
The total amount is two thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Our church will, will do half of that as, is it okay we do it on a monthly basis? We will underwrite half that in our budget.
Then would you go ahead and introduce yourself, please?
I'm Pastor Gibson with the Word of Life Church. We're in the old Fort Town Baptist Building. We've been there about seven years now. And we're, we're out to help the community. We feed a lot of people, pass out food and everything else, too, but we're out to make a public difference. And this is one of our heart, heart drives, too, is that, that a lot of people I see, I work for Derek's Pawn Shop, and I've, I've got people coming all the time looking for places to stay and to live and to eat. And so I think the church is in link with the, the community, with, with the city government can, can make a difference.
Oh, I, I believe that.
Thank you.
I'd like to put the board of motion in the city, whatever the difference is.
Do your hand, that way.
We all look at ourselves for the remainder, so that you make your, your cash match a bonus.
Have a motion, Senator.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fainan?
Yes.
Mr. Freyam?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion, Chair. Phil, thank you.
Thank you.
For the second year, if they come up to it, if you come to Riggs Drug, we'll supply the second year.
See?
Thank you.
See, just two people. Okay, Phil, let's wait a minute.
I thought you had something. We used to go say something to him.
I just wanna know, uh, let's continue to know, we're out here to do our best to help the, help this community, so whatever comes up, uh, if they, if somebody will let us know, we will do what we can do.
We really appreciate that, and we thank you.
Thank you.
I guess you'll get a five gallon bucket.
Wait, wait.
I got plenty of five gallon bucket, that one.
Okay. Okay, yes.
My question is, uh, a guy just came to the other day, did he end up at your place or the library?
I'm not sure, I don't have...
Wait, wait. What kind of, you got, if someone is incarcerated, or someone is in a mental health facility, or someone is in a halfway house, and they get ready to release, they're homeless, I'd like to know what is home, you got?
What the definition is?
Can we say homeless?
Okay, that, that's a good question. And, and I think that, especially in this context, it's important to realize, this is not an emergency housing grant. So this is not a grant to put somebody up in a hotel for two or three days until we can move them off to someplace else.
It's not a long-term...
No. This is a permanent supportive housing grant. And so people have to fit the definition of homeless, meaning that they have been living in a situation that was unfit for human habitation. They have to meet the definition of chronically homeless, which means they've been homeless for a year, or that they've been homeless three times over the last four years. And if that is the case, primarily because of economics more than anything, then we would look at their history and determine what would be the best course of action to them. Now, in addition to this grant, Ridgeview has a grant, the Novus Grant, and that money is for dual diagnosed individuals who have mental health problems and other kinds of issues. And that five-year grant of some millions of dollars is designed to help those individuals. We're prioritizing victims of domestic violence, people coming out of treatment facilities like drug court, and that means they're still being drug tested, and then individuals such as disabled veterans, or people who may be coming out of other treatment facilities who are willing to abide by the rules. So...
So there's accountability with your program?
Most definitely. I'll be meeting with them every week.
What's your goal? In a year's time, it takes, even on the road?
Yes, and, and in two years' time, in some instances, however long it takes, if they're gonna be able to be self-sufficient and make it on their own. A lot of our women who are involved in domestic violence situations have never had to try to build a budget, know very little about financing, they don't understand the complications of installment buying and all those kinds of things. So we're gonna be doing an awful lot of life skills development and drug and alcohol counseling, any kind of counseling that we feel would be appropriate. We won't know what their individual needs are until they come in and they participate in an intake assessment. And then there is an action plan that has to be created and submitted. HUD's gonna be following this all along the way. They wanna see that these benchmarks are made. If they're not, then we're not gonna be successful. So we're gonna be selective in who we choose, and if we come across someone who's needy but doesn't fit our program, we'll refer them to another program.
One more question. These, these units, or whatever you wanna call them?
Scattered apartment sites.
Apartment?
Mm-hmm.
They will be in the city limits of LeFollet?
They have to be.
And they'll meet all the safety codes, uh...
They have to be HUD-approved.
Okay. You've answered all my questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Under administration, I'm free, approved to replace, repair, and...
We appropriated some money for that, and basically I just need to get the color that, that you wanna go with and get them ordered, so I can get them in time for the street festival we're having. So that's pretty much the colors we can choose from. These, these right here, these four.
These are the kind we got?
Yeah, the brown is what we got, and it...
This is the ones that you're talking about?
Right, that's the ones we put at the soccer field. We do it, six of them, three of them at the soccer field. That's the color we chose there.
Yeah. That's the planner.
That's the planner.
Right.
Our garbage can.
Yeah.
Just a question, you know, what color?
What color?
Looks really like that color that that show does, unless it's...
It's a ninety, it's not, it's standing like a silver thing. It's bronze, and basically it's bronze, bronze color.
Okay, now I'll get three clothes on.
I just wanna mention a couple things. Uh, Police Chief Lince wanted to go ahead and advertise for the police cruisers that we had in the budget to come out front bouncy. We've got specs on those, so if it's okay with council, we're, we're gonna go ahead and run an advertisement or bid on those, on the two.
It's two?
Yeah, two. Is that okay with everybody? And, and then I wanted to mention this to you, the Chamber, Commerce Call, the Chamber, and they're working, they work every year on their government's three-star program. And they've asked, they got until May to get this done, they're asking all the cities that, that's in the county, if at least one city official would go to an elected official's class, they get points for that, to help on their three-star program to be approved. And they've asked if someone before May, when this class is coming up, if at least, at least the person would go to one of those classes. And then they get points for it on the program.
Amended by deleting the existing section in its entirety and replacing the same as follows. Eight dash two oh one sales of beer shall hereafter be lawful to sell, store, resell, distribute, or manufacture beer of alcoholic content of not more than five percent by weight or other beverage of like alcoholic content within the boundaries and corporate limits of the city of LeFollet. The corporate boundaries of the city of LeFollet, some racist territories established by the charter of the city of LeFollet, as well as all annexations duly approved and adopted by the city of LeFollet, Tennessee. Any license duly authorized by the chapter shall be within said corporate boundaries described herein, uh, that are now zoned or may be in the future be zoned for business use, and the same shall be subject to all regulations, limitations, and restrictions as herein, herein acts provided, which are, which are our beer code. So it is basically, uh, it's our new boundaries out there. The old, the old, I wasn't aware of it, but the old, uh, old beer code only had a restricted area.
Yeah, I didn't translate that to it, was it?
I did.
Okay. Okay, what's the motion, council?
Mayor, motion that we approve twenty dash thirteen zero one.
Motion, have a say.
Say.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fainan?
No.
Mr. Freyam?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion, Chair.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Uh, I got memorandum from Kay, I'm sorry, I just now looked at today. It's talking about the insurance, and it said in addition, it's talking about deductible going up, the out-of-pocket going up, and it said in addition, we cannot continue to offer short-term or long-term visibility. And we've not voted on that or anything like that.
Oh, that's correct. Uh, if you, we, uh...
So we're gonna continue to do it through this month until we have a workshop, because I, I think it's a big benefit for employees.
Was it hitting your package, though?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I sent out, I think, to put in the paycheck, you know? Basically, we've looking at money, and y'all approved, was it thirty-five thousand? Keep the insurance? If, Terry, if we added, if we added the long-term, short-term, is it gonna be, is it gonna kick it up over that?
But it's already in the budget.
No.
The long-term, short-term is already there, I know.
Well, it was, but, but, but what they, uh, what they actually quoted for the health insurance was over the, over the budget. So anything you add would be in an o, additional overage.
I understand, so this is what you're trying to cut to get the...
Yes. We're trying to cut that to get the re, the amount that y'all approved, the thirty-five thousand dollars short. And this, if you add that to it, it'd be more than thirty-five thousand. I realize that long-term, short-term is, is definitely a benefit, and I have no problem, we have no problem with adding back in, you just don't tell us to, and if I vote, tell us we can get the money.
It's not out yet. I mean, right now, it's still in effect, we haven't voted yet. It was in the budget, I saw it in the budget. So...
We ju, we just had an amount in the budget just for the, just total insurance, and when they quoted, uh, the quote was thirty-five thousand over what was in there, so if, if you keep, if you do keep that, um, I don't think nobody's told them to, to take it out. You're just gonna have to prove additional money beside thirty-five thousand.
How much, Terry?
We'd have, well, they didn't give us any, they not give us any quotes on it, so we kept, you calculate it by per...
I mean, we've had it for six years, and it's been around twenty-three, twenty-five thousand for every year. And in some cases, when this, when an officer goes down, or a police, uh, fireman goes down or a street, they can use this at sixty percent of their salary, up to five thousand dollars per month, and it really not save their homes and everything else that's being worked.
We can put them in the general workshop, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it, it just continues till we top it.
Yeah, so he actually didn't give, didn't even mention it when he came, when they quoted on the insurance, uh, there wasn't any calculations on it at all.
We had, uh, I'm like Bob, we had it, approved the long-term, I think, what, four, four years ago?
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, and it was supposed to still be in there.
Well, it, it was, it was calculated at, at that particular time, uh, you know, what was in this budget now, since it renews at the time it does, was just an increase in the budget per se from last year. That ca, that calculation included, as you all said, short-term and long-term, but like I said, the to, it was in the total.
Well, in the budget, it had eight percent, you allowed eight percent for health insurance.
But it, but, but that wasn't enough, yeah.
But, well, it was only seven point two.
But that was part of the package.
Yeah. No, it wasn't, this is separate from the health insurance. Yeah.
But we, 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 usually they give you a, a calculation on it, and then we just add to the health, health insurance, and it all goes in that one line item. Now, it was, it, it's been in there, except when we did this budget and added the percentage, uh, the, the quote just for health was over the nine hundred eleven, so anything else you add to it, if you keep that, it's gonna be more than thirty-five thousand.
Oh, will you know more about that for our next workshop?
We'll just have to get him to give us some calculations on it.
You can do that.
Yeah, he just, he just didn't bring any, yeah.
Do you know about businesses, there is?
I'm like motioning during the session until Friday the eighteenth at five P.M.
Let's do it at six P.M., please?
Or six P.M.
I was just burning it tonight.
At six P.M.
Six P.M.? They have a motion, they have a say.
Say.
Mr. Ballinger?
Want the motion?
Yes.
During the session.
During the session. On the roof, two of the windows.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fainan?
Yes.
Mr. Freyam? Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion, Chair. Do you know what business things are? During?
Your board, Todd Lord, Todd, draw, please.
Mr. Ballinger?
Here.
Mr. Fainan?
Here.
Mr. Freyam? Mr. Hatmaker?
Mr. Gerald, uh... At last, my airport meeting, we, they, we approved a beer bin that fell in this zone that we're trying to correct, so they weren't allowed to give it. Do we need to rescind that?
I would think that basically it was technically moved out since we didn't have the authority to grant it. And I just, just, we just need to put it back on the agenda, it'll be approved by the next meeting, all this voted back on that. Okay. That, that would be the simple...
I mean, can we, I mean, since you approved the old city, that's not a mistake. I mean, can we, I mean, since you approved the old city, that, no, that's had, that?
It'll be next month, 'cause we got another reading.
Okay.